We'll call it a order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting. Says for January the 21st, 2025. Thank everybody for their patience. We'll get into that a little bit later. The city, the city council has the minutes from our January 7th committee of the whole. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, is there approved to, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion as second. Any further comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes carry forth. Questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Is there any questions related to tonight's agenda? I know we have a corrected agenda that you have put up, put before all of us.
No, the corrected agenda is just changing the date to today's date. And then there was an inadvertent listing of a, of a public hearing that, that people in the audience do not have in their printed copies, the one that went out for the 21st. So there'd be a public hearing about an annexation. We don't have public hearings with annexations. So that was just removed to clarify.
Okay, good. All right. Any questions? All right. Anything else? Mr. Griswold.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, over the cold spell, we had, I had some constituents concerned about this safeguarding some of the domestic animals that were left out during the cold or tethered or caged or whatever. I'd like the council to consider having the staff present us a status report at the next committee of the whole on what our current regulations are for protection of domestic animals. And if they have any suggestions for improvement, that they bring those forward too. And if so, we can act on them at that time.
Certainly, Kelly, I agree. There was a lot of confusion about the responsibility of the city council and what we can and can't do with animals on private property. Does anyone else on the council have a comment or a thought on that? What, what Mr. Griswold would be asking us to do, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ms. Griswold, is to, if the next committee of the whole, first meeting in February, take some time just to receive a report on this, correct?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay.
Is there, in fairness to the staff, is there time to pull together such a report by the next meeting?
Well, I think it's, if I'm understanding correctly, and Councilman Griswold, correct me if I'm wrong, is you just want to know what our current policies are and procedures and how that's handled. And then you're asking if staff sees the need for any changes and what those changes are. And if we tell you, we think we need changes, then you would say, hey, yeah, we're good with that. And then we'd put it on a future agenda.
Yeah, that, exactly right. Well, one, one addition, and also what state or not just local safeguards, but whatever the state puts out as well. It should be one of the same, but just in case.
Well, we need to distinguish what jurisdiction, what laws have what jurisdiction in Auburn.
Yeah.
I think our biggest challenge with animal control things is, is what you would do for your own animal is different than others would. And one challenge we also had is you may not go onto private property and care for other people's animals without the legal authority to do so. And police were also dealing with that in this event. So we appreciate everyone's concerns, happy to address them. But I think it's a very emotional thing for a lot of people. And we understand that. So it's kind of goes both ways.
So Ms. Witten asked, is that possible to do in two weeks, Ms. Crouch?
Since our environmental services director is, is not here this evening, I'm going to ask her if, if she can. And if the caveat is, if she can't, we'll bump it to a future meeting. I'll send you an email if that's amenable to you.
Okay.
I want to make sure we're giving you the best information. But as you know, we're several days behind in services and she's still running her crews, trying to get caught up.
And we appreciate that. Is anybody else on the council have a thought on this? Is everybody agreeable to that?
I'm supportive of it.
Okay, okay. All right. We'll do that.
Okay.
Potentially in two weeks, if not at a time soon afterwards. All right.
Uh, thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Anything else for the city manager? Okay. Is there a move to adjourn the committee of the whole?
So moved.
All right, the committee of the whole is adjourned and we will start right at six o'clock. We'll call it a order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for January the 23rd. We appreciate everybody who has come out tonight on a difficult weather week. We certainly welcome those who are listening on WA and I, who are watching through our streaming services. With the roll call, Lindsey?
Adams.
Here.
Coeblins.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor. Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Earlier tonight during the committee of the whole, there were no official agenda items, but Councilman Griswold did ask the city council to set aside time at a future committee of the whole to discuss pet safety, which is a topic that came up recently during the inclement weather. And so we will try to get that done in a couple of weeks. But in fairness to Environmental Services Department who have had a rough week and are still working hard, it might be the meetings afterwards. We will let you know. Under mayor's announcements, speaking of the weather, I just want to say thank you to all of the departments in the city. And I guess particularly public safety, but all of our departments, public works, environmental services, y'all know who's been out there working really hard in a very difficult time. Thank you for protecting us and keeping us safe and allowing us to be inside our houses warm while you're outside taking care of everything in our community. It's been a very challenging week and we have worked hard to make it as safe as possible. I appreciate our citizens heeding the call to stay at home and not to travel amongst some of the more dangerous roads. I know everyone didn't hear that heed, but most of our citizens did. And if we can just hang through another day, the weekend will be here and we can get some warmer weather and we can move on next week to regular week. But to all of our departments, all of our staff, thank you for that. And any citizens, I know there were some good citizens out there that were helping people who were in difficult times too. Thank you for doing that. Under mayor's announcements tonight, I want to say thank you to Councilman Parsons for representing me at the polar plunge. It sounds like it went excellent. Don't know if you want to say anything about that.
Oh, yes.
You did a great job. It was, I'm, I'll have to admit, I'm a little surprised and disappointed. You were the only one that jumped in the water. That's something for us to work on for next year. But anyway, Bob, thank you for being there and thank you for your partner in crime, Mr. Griswold, bringing hot coffee. I'm sure that had a point too. One day, we're going to get him in the water before this all said and done. I want to say congratulations to Coach Larry Blakeney and former Auburn All-American Greg Carr for being nominated to the College Football Hall of Fame. They'll be going in sometime later on this spring. Coach Blakeney has retired here in our community and Greg Carr is an orthopedic surgeon in Birmingham. They've both represented Auburn with honor, even though Coach Blakeney was probably recognized for being the head coach at Troy State for many years. But congratulations to them. I want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the Martin Luther King breakfasts this past Monday. I know a number of our staff were involved in that. And, and Al was recognized with a, with a reward for his service to our community for a long, long time. But it was an excellent breakfast with an outstanding speaker. Also want to thank the Boys and Girls Club, who had a celebration the same day, recognizing Dr. King's legacy and their national board and national officers came down and participated in a service project at the Auburn unit on, over the weekend. So it was great to meet all of them and we appreciate their work and their investment in our local club here. And I certainly appreciate all the efforts that they do on a daily basis to provide for our children here. The Milken Institute recently recognized Auburn as the 10th best-run city, small city in the United States. That is an improvement of four places from last year. And that doesn't happen by accident. It's very intentionally done that our, our staff and works very hard to accomplish the goals that are recognized by the Milken Institute. There's a, our public affairs staff put out some information about that. I encourage our citizens to go and read that. This is the community you live in. These are the objectives of the people that work for you in this community. And I'm very proud of their efforts to be recognized on such a national level. Speaking of one of our departments, our Parks and Rec, I guess, will be helping to co-host a statewide conference. It'll be descending upon Auburn this weekend. And we look forward to having all the Parks and Rec officials from around the state of Alabama. I presume it's the state, Allison, not the state, in our community for a couple of days. We also, myself and the city manager and the mayor pro temp are excited about having the Auburn Student Council, who'll be making their annual field trip over here in a couple of weeks to learn more about our, our government and how we work. And we're very proud to engage with those young people at Auburn High School and appreciate the fact that they're so interested in how their community works. Today was the 48th memorial service for Roger Brookshire, who is our only firefighter who has passed away in the line of duty. Certainly in years past, there's been a larger contingent of representatives at this memorial service, but certainly I don't want the day to go by without saying that we recognize the sacrifice of Mr. Brookshire and certainly the loss for his family over the years. And it's been 48 years, which is hard to believe. But thank him for his service to our community. Want to remind everybody in our community that public safety is having their own academy. Our citizens academy has gone well the last couple of years. And I have all the confidence in the world that those in public safety will lead a great group of people who will go through a great program. And you'll, you can learn more about how Auburn's public safety works. And I encourage you to take an opportunity to, to do that. Recently, we've lost a couple of people in our community who were really foundations in our community. Mr. Francis Sander passed away yesterday. Mr. Sander has been in Auburn for a long time. He actually played college baseball in Auburn. He has been the official scorekeeper at Auburn Men's Basketball Game forever. And, and was the scorekeeper at the most recent game against Mississippi State last week. And he passed away. And he has meant much to our community. He was longtime Dixie Youth Baseball Coach in Auburn and has given much to us. And then John Wild, who came to Auburn in the late 90s, was the general manager of Auburn University Hotel and Conference Center, and then moved over to the Auburn Opelika Tourism in 2003. He was, you might have seen him as a photographer at Auburn High Athletics, or Auburn City Community Events, or Auburn University Athletics. He spent time working with the Creole Preserve on their board, and the Rotary Club, and his church. And he's just simply one of the greatest guys I've ever known. And John passed away on Sunday. All right. Anyone else?
Before the honorable Bob Parsons gets on here, I would like to say that hindsight is 2020. And it's easy to say now, boy, wasn't the weather tough. But to get out in front of that is hard to do. Most people don't believe the weather report. They say, sure, it's going to rain, it's going to snow in Mobile too. You know, whoever heard of such? So I want to thank you for getting out in front of it. City manager and Mr. Mayor, they were all over it. They were emailing us constantly and checking the weather. And it was nice that we got ready. And thank you also to the city staff. Oh, my goodness. It was a lot to do. And we were just at home, hunkered down, and y'all were out there in it. So thank you very much for the sacrifices you made on a very cold day and a difficult situation. And you stole my thunder on the other, but I'm going to do it anyway. I would like to pay tribute to the councilman from Ward Six, the honorable Bob Parsons, who braved the cold of 18 January and took the plunge on behalf of all of us in support of the Special Olympics. Thank you, Bob, for your courage and dedication to the cause. And we were there with you in spirit.
Well, that's great. Thank you so much, Councilman Mormon. Yes, it was a great day. It was a little chilly out there. I took every opportunity to bring it to the attention of the public that the mayor wasn't there, after pointing me out on, for a number of occasions. But he had a very good reason not to be there. He was celebrating the birth of his grandbaby in Nashville. So congratulations, Mr. Mayor. There's always next year.
There's always next year. Absolutely. Good. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else? Having an announcement? Okay. We'll move ahead with Auburn University Communications.
Hey, good afternoon. This week at Auburn was definitely different. We had off on Monday for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. And then on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we had remote operations all week. Planning to go back in person tomorrow. But Tuesday was truly a special day at Auburn. The snow caused a lot of students to come out, celebrate on Sanford Lawn. They let students into the stadium to see Jordan Hare when it was all snowy. And then also students were sledding down hills. So it was super, super fun on Tuesday. A lot of events, though, were canceled this week. Our Learn to Lobby Day unfortunately was canceled, but we're postponing it to another date. We're still trying to figure all of that out. This week also, Pi KI interviews are happening with Auburn University Panellanic. If y'all don't know what a Pi KI is, it's basically the sorority like counselors for girls that go through recruitment in the fall. And then also the Financial Management Association interviews are happening this week. And they will come out with who made that next week. So that's super exciting. And then on Saturday, College Game Day is coming for the Tennessee Auburn game. So that's super exciting as well. The line for students will open at 6:30 a.m. And they're looking to see a lot of students out there. This upcoming Monday, SGA will be hosting an involvement browse for students that are interested in joining SGA next year. And then SGA's Creed Day is next week on Wednesday. And that is just a day that they highlight the Auburn Creed. So yes, we're looking forward to those events. And that's all. We're Eagle.
We're Eagle. Are you going to be out there at 6:30 Saturday morning?
I'm planning on.
Okay. All right. At this time, we'll open up the, the microphone for citizens communications on the items on tonight's agenda. This is only on items on tonight's agenda. I would point out to you, if your item that you'd like to speak to us tonight has a public hearing attached with that, which you could see in the agenda you picked up by the door, please wait until then to make your comments. But any other items in our agenda that does not have a public hearing attached, this will be your opportunity to speak to the council. We'd ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record. And you'll have five minutes to speak. Okay. We'll move ahead with city manager's communications.
Under city manager's communications this evening, we have the announcement of five vacancies on the Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee for terms that begin March 9th and end March 8th, 2029. Our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Seeing one, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is, that is approved. Ordinances.
Under ordinances, item 9A is a request to annex approximately 53.5 acres of property located on the north side of West Farmville Road between Pepperwood Trail, also known as Lee Road 91, and Auburn Lakes Road. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its December 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary. In addition, the applicant has requested that this item be postponed along with 9B1 and 9B2 to February 18th.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second. Have a motion as second. Seeing one on the council, I have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening. Okay. Seeing a hearing none. Is there any comments or questions?
I do have a couple.
Please.
Was there a request for pre-zoning with these action items?
There is not, to my knowledge. I'll ask the planning director.
There was not.
Okay. Is, is it fair if we, if the applicant's present, that we ask them a question?
Absolutely. I believe he is. I'll say it's the applicant's representative, the engineer, Leatharp.
Leatharp, cadre engineer.
Hey there. Thank you. Can you state the reason for a request for postponement?
Primarily, it's due to the future land use plan that is up on the next agenda item. We were just hoping to have that finalized before we brought that before the council. I know that was an issue at Planning Commission. We were able to talk through that, but it just seemed like it might be a clearer path forward once you guys have decided on where that future land use plan stands.
Okay. And you're aware, I mean, to confirm, you did, you did not want pre-zoning action items before the annexation?
You might have to help me out there, Justice, on.
Yeah. So, so for everybody in the audience, and for the applicant, pre-zoning is you can petition, you petition to pre-zone, which means that you can secure the zoning for the property prior to annexation. And so the annexation won't go through if you do not get the zoning requested. And so it's a, it's unique to Alabama, but it is a thing.
Okay.
But was.
I'm a little on the spot now, but I'll.
Let me interject real quickly. Hold on. And I, it's my understanding, Mr. Whyhe Cotton, that you have possibly mentioned this at times, at least to the owner or the soon-to-be owner of the property, or not on this particular case.
No. And so, and so, so normally, that's something that the applicant mentions, and that's something that we do bring up in pre-op meetings, that that is an option. Like when people bring forth the annexation and the rezoning, that is something that we do discuss. It's kind of a question. Oftentimes, people just, they want everything kind of at once. So it's just the annexation, rezoning kind of deal.
But you don't recall if there was a specific conversation about this case?
No, because I guess kind of on, on other properties, oftentimes what you'll have is if people have ambitions to develop outside in the county, kind of independent of if it goes through or not, they will request pre-zoning. Because then it kind of alters their plans from a sewer and water standpoint, what the utilities are required. But if people are planning to kind of incorporate that in their plan anyway, pre-zoning never really comes up. And so on developments that are, that make more sense in the county, or that make more sense in the city, that kind of rely on utilities, pre-zoning's never really brought up. So if it's a situation where it's, well, we would, well, we would come into the city and then we'll have to do X. But if we don't come into the city, then we have another plan where this is a kind of relying on utilities, then we'll probably request a pre-zoning. And that way, we can kind of know and save money kind of on the back end with kind of developing in the county.
I think with that explanation, we would probably be more comfortable not doing the pre-zoning, just because we are, the entire development's purely reliant on the access to utilities.
And is there a timetable for a decision on the zoning requests? If, if you postpone, to what date would you like to postpone that to?
With, when Justice and I were talking, it was the second meeting in February. So I believe that's the 18th.
18th.
18th is kind of what we're targeting. If that would work out with the, the.
But if the, if the comp plan, okay. I mean, we're, because it's kind of unique that we would, if we did postpone to a date certain of 218, that's under the, under the guise that we actually take up a vote on the comp plan 2030 item this evening?
Agreed. We're, and I'll, I'll throw this out there for the council. We're already long past the original agreed-upon due diligence period on the property. And part of it has been because of the ongoing changes and discussions on the future land use plan, particularly as it relates to this property. I don't know that we can push it a whole lot past the second week of, or the second meeting in February anyway. So I think we'd probably be comfortable moving forward with that. I also don't know that we have a lot of options from the development side, if that's helpful.
Okay. Well, there may be other questions. But if annexation is not contingent upon the zoning, it would be my request that we go ahead and address that issue this evening. And then at the applicant's request, postpone items B1 and 2 when we get to that, to a date certain of 218.
I would say that because the, the applicant is not the property owner, and it's still can, all that's contingent upon the sale, I think we would like to leave the annexation and all of it together and not do the annexation this evening, if that's agreeable. Just because it, from our perspective, I think it needs to be packaged together. I'd hate to annex the property in for.
Lee, I'll just let you know, procedurally, you're welcome to request. The council can because it's on the agenda unless it's withdrawn. They have the right to act on it. It's not. I just want you to know your options. It's, one of the challenges that we're having right now is a lot of people are on hold with things. Council's not decided. There may be due diligence dates that need to be met. And so the, the choice is, is independent of the land use plan, they can, they can vote however they, they choose to vote on the whole thing tonight. So you have answers. If that's what they want to do, they can vote on parts of it. They can postpone all of it. But once it's unlike Planning Commission, unless you flat out withdraw an application, the council has the right to act on it.
Okay.
And so they've heard your request, but I don't know if you would then prefer, if you're saying the outside date, we're already the second meeting in January. If the outside date is the end of February, and say they choose not to deal with the land use plan, and it goes beyond that date, you've got to get an answer. So it's kind of, yeah.
Okay. I don't think we want to withdraw. So I think we're.
No, I figured. So they just know you're answering that question. And then that's up to them.
Thank you, Ms. Dart.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion.
No, it's, it's all good. Any other thoughts? Or are you, are you, you got any other comments, Ms. Witten?
Well, I mean, I do have several, and they kind of all tie together, but with the other items that are after this. But this is a high priority for annexation. So I would think regardless of the actions of B1 and 2, that we as a council would want to go ahead and ensure that this piece is annexed into the city because it's well within the optimal boundaries. And so that would be my suggestion to go ahead and annex that since the applicant did not seek pre-zoning. And then we could address B1 and 2 after this item. That would be my suggestion.
All right. Your thoughts or comments from the council?
I don't necessarily disagree with that logic, but my feeling is that if the owner is not represented, it's not customary or reasonable, I don't think, to annex something that's not been requested to be.
So they would have filled out an application of authorization to act as applicant. And once they've done that, that is allowing the person that they've got a contract with, in essence, to do any of the above. So there would be a legal document on file with the planning department.
Is there a legal document on file?
Yeah, correct. So we don't accept any applications not from the owner without the authorization to act.
Yeah. And I think our, our challenge for you to decipher as a council is that's between the two of them. And you have to decide how you feel about that, meaning the, the potential future owner and the applicant.
Start, are you asking to make another comment?
I'm happy to hear what, I mean.
Yes, sir.
Sorry to interject. One thing I would ask, and again, procedurally, help me out here. But if we're going to move forward with a vote on the annexation regardless, then I would think in that case, we would like to go ahead and get the pre-zoning to, like you said, that would guarantee, maybe I've misunderstood that. Would that, if the annexation is approved?
Because it wasn't done that way, yeah.
Yeah. How would that work?
Yeah, no. So, so pre-zonings are, not to say they're their own, their own application, but it is something you would have to petition for.
It's not something we could do in this.
No, no, no. Not, not something you can do in the form, something you have to do kind of at the outset, at the beginning. Because then, so, because then, like I said, so it secures the, it secures the zoning prior to the annexation. And so it's not something that like it would be on the same agenda. It would be its own separate item, kind of going for it as conditional use, under the condition that, hey, if we can get this zoning, then we'll come back and we'll annex with it later.
It, it gets reversed on the agenda is, is part of it. But you're, you're making your wishes known based on what you've heard from the council, is what I'm hearing you say.
Well, I think, I think that kind of changes things for us. And the reason I say that is the, the development and sale of property is contingent on the utility aspect of it. I think from that. I think from that perspective, if there was an issue with, if the property was annexed in, then the development was not approved from the PDD or the rezoning aspect, then we may be putting in, you know, a burden on the current property owner if the deal didn't work out, that maybe they wouldn't necessarily agree with. So I think from that perspective, we'd probably want to withdraw it and bring it back once the comp plan is approved.
If you want to withdraw, that would probably, you would understand after we get through this evening where that comp plan item, if it's acted upon tonight.
Well, just warn one thing, withdrawal means start back at Planning Commission, legal advertising, and you can pre-zone at that time. But it means, it has to go back completely, can't start up again here. So that will take you past your February timeframe.
It would. I think that's something we're just going to have to deal with. Ooh, sorry about that. I think that's probably what we're going to want to do.
And nothing stops, you had a traffic study in progress and some other, nothing stops collaboration with the staff. It just means, it stops it here, and then they wouldn't act. If you want to formally withdraw at this time, you're welcome to do that. And it would be all three of those items, 9A, and then B1 and B2.
Okay. I think given the circumstances, that may be what we want to do. Again, sorry for the confusion in the discussion, but this was helpful for me, so I appreciate you.
Okay.
Just to clarify, you wish to withdraw, not postpone at this point?
Yes, that way we can couple everything together. Yes, sir.
All three items?
Yes, sir.
All right, do we need to-
How do we need to handle that?
No, we are fine if they're withdrawn, just clarifying, you're going all the way back, and then, yeah. And so, because you are, right now, they can act on the annexation, and you're saying you're uncertain about what the now property owner says about it versus your client and so on. So you're choosing to withdraw to, yep.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure everybody's clear. And so ultimately, he has stated on the microphone that he's good with withdrawing 9A and 9B1 and 9B2, all having to do with the Greenwood project.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for your patience.
Okay.
All right, so that wipes out our ordinances, except for a text amendment. Item 9C is a zoning ordinance text amendment to create planned unit developments. The action would amend Article 3, Section 304, and Article 5, Section 504 of the City of Auburn zoning ordinance. Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this amendment at December 12th meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary, and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
We have a motion to second. I will, postpone is the right word?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll move to postpone this until the second meeting in March.
Second.
We have a motion to second to postpone the planned unit development text amendments to Article 5, Section 504 of our ordinance. Is there any comments or questions on that from the-
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate us having the time to review the details of this amendment. I presume we're going to have some type of work session scheduled for it.
Absolutely, we'll get one scheduled. Maybe discount on top of the holidays and the comp plan work sessions for you guys, so gladly. There's not a public hearing. Correct. It's not been, you did not choose to open a public hearing tonight, because you're in the middle of a motion for postponement.
Right. All right, any other comments or questions related to the postponement?
So we don't have a public hearing since we're postponing, right? Do we need to take-
Well, that's at the pleasure of the majority of the council.
Council, normally, we would wait to have a public hearing when we vote, when we bring this back forward, which would be the second meeting in March. Okay?
But you're certainly accessible by email, phone calls, and otherwise to the citizens, yes.
Absolutely. All right, any other comments or questions? Do we need to have a roll call vote on this?
On the postponement?
On the postponement?
Your voice vote is fine, because you're not officially acting.
Okay. All in favor of postponing to the second meeting in March, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
And Mayor, for the record, I'm going to ask our Assistant City Clerk to just go back to item 9A, just to be sure we're i-dotting and t-crossing.
Sure.
It's, who introduced the ordinance and asked for unanimous consent?
I have Whitten.
Do you mind just withdrawing that based on the fact that the applicant postponed? I mean, that applicant withdrew, so you're going to withdraw your motion, just in case it's needed.
Sure, I withdraw ordinance 9A.
Perfect. Just to make sure, in case that's needed for the record. So that is the end of ordinances on resolutions. Item 10A authorizes text amendments and future land use map changes to comp plan 2030 as part of a five-year update. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this update at its November 14th meeting. This item was postponed from the December 17th meeting for a work session. A public hearing is required.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Before we move forward with a public hearing, I believe there are a couple of council members that do have some comments that they'd like to make. And I'd like, we'll turn this over to you, Mr. Parsons, to begin with.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that this council strike-
Hold on just a second. Without the public hearing, you want to amend now before you open the public hearing? You're fine either way, just want to clarify.
I'm fine with this way, if you're all good.
Yep, you go.
I'd like to make the motion that this council strike growth changes number five and number six from the 2035 year update.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to strike growth changes five and six from the comp plan five-year update. All right. Any other comments or questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the reason that I'm proposing these strikes, particularly on growth change number six, is I certainly appreciate the planning staff's concerns about growth and density in, as this city continues to grow. However, the residents from my ward, Ward 6, that particularly growth change number six effect, have no appetite and no interest in seeing this amendment. They consider this, those parcels to be, to, that they should remain neighborhood conservation. There are a number of residents who have plans on living their lives out on a number of those parcels, and they do not appreciate the possible threat of the extra density at this time. So those are the, that's the reason that I'm asking that be struck.
Okay. Ms. Whitten, not to put you on the spot, but-
Sure, no, I'm here.
Growth change number five is in your ward, and I wanted to give you a chance to speak to it.
Yes, the proposed change is staff-initiated, going from rural to low-density residential slash medium-intensity mixed use. If you look at the area itself, to the south is rural and institutional. The east is still somewhat outside of the city limits and rural. And the west is limited development district and partially institutional. Also, in a previous meeting, the question was asked where Farmville Road was in conjunction with some upgrades and some potential, widening may not even be the case, but upgrading Farmville Road. And it was stated that that's not even on the CIP at this stage of the game, is what I understand.
Widening of Farmville Road is not. The intersection of Farmville and Donahue definitely is.
Correct. So I just feel like it's premature at this time to do anything additional than rural for this large parcel, especially with the congestion and construction that is already in the pipeline for this area that we have to address.
Good. All right. So Ms. Kraus, just following, through making sure I'm procedurally correct. These, we have got amendments for, to strike the growth changes in items five and six. Both of the people who represent those wards have spoken to that. Do we have further discussion from the council? Is now the time for a public hearing?
No, you need to, you've got an amendment on the table, because that amends the main motion. You need to carry that out and determine where you stand, so that the public then understands, what are you thinking you might vote on? Yep. So right now, you've got a main motion that is approving it as a whole, and to explain to anybody that doesn't understand Robert's rules, we're going to put these growth changes up on the screen, so you can see real quick. But you have to make a motion to approve, to put it on the table, which you've done now. Councilman Parsons has proposed to amend it to remove growth changes five, which is this one on Farmville Road. And then next is growth change six, which is a Wrights Mill, Sanford, and Reese Avenue land use change, and that is the current proposal. So you just deal with the amendment and vote on the amendment. You're still in order after you deal with the amendment. As a public hearing, you can postpone the rest of the things. You can do a lot of things. You just deal with this amendment while you're in it before you open the public hearing.
Deal with it, takes it all the way down to voting on these amendments, right?
Voting on the amendment, but not, not whether or not you're adopting it as amended or not, just the amendment itself.
I got you, okay. So, any further discussion from the council about either one of these? Mr. Griswold?
I just have a question. Are these growth changes represented in text anywhere, or just in these charts?
No, it's just in a map, because it's going to show up on online interactive future land use map.
So there's no corresponding text-
There is not a corresponding text. So the texts that you see in here about neighborhood preservation or urban neighborhood South, those kinds of things are already defined in the comprehensive plan as to what they mean. So no, yeah, no text changes go with this.
Okay.
Anyone else have a comment or thought that they'd like to make?
These two, these two.
Oh, these two, these two, the amended ones, yes, yes, gee. Well, I'll jump in here. Certainly, we've got, received a lot of emails, particularly from folks who live in the Wrights Mill, Marion Circle, Gay Street, Reese Avenue area. We've read them all, and we hear what you have to say. And I certainly will be supporting Mr. Parsons' amendment here tonight. There, as Bob said, there are still families that are making a living over there, and living life over there and nearby. And there was a lot of concerns brought forward about potentialities for traffic and other concerns that added density could add to this area right here. So, anyway, and I appreciate everybody reaching out to us. I thought most, if not all, the correspondence was appropriately written and communicated well to us, so. Any other comments, thoughts? And then I agree with Ms. Whitten, there's a lot going on in the Farmville area. A lot could potentially be, continue to happen out there. And I just don't think this is the time for us to densify this particular piece of property. Any other comments? All right, so we can do a voice vote on this amendment at this point in time?
Yeah, you're in a resolution, you're fine with a voice vote.
All right, so we have a motion.
We taking the questions separately, or together? Five and six together?
There was a single motion.
It was a single motion, yeah.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. All right. So all in favor of these amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And those amendments have carried.
So now, what you're considering now is adoption of this minus growth changes five and six at this point.
Okay, all right. And go ahead and have the public hearing at this point, too?
If the council's ready for a public hearing.
Y'all ready? Okay, all right. So we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the City Council regarding this, we ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes to speak to the City Council, okay?
This is regarding anything relative to this item, not just the amendment.
Absolutely, relative to this item. All right, we'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to speak to the council. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we table this till the second meeting in April, which I believe is April the 15th. I have not had enough time to meet with my constituents. I have not had time to contact them appropriately, and I feel like we should. This has come up rather quickly for me, given the Christmas holiday and the inclement weather we've had lately. And I just felt we were throwing too much at them too quick, and I need to read it more, they need to read it more. So I would ask that the balance of this just be continued until April 15th.
Second.
All right. I have a motion to second to table voting on the totality of this, the comprehensive plan update, until the second meeting in April, which is tax day.
Mayor, may I clarify, Councilman Dawson, do you mean postpone?
Yes.
Okay, postpone.
Postpone.
Sorry, in Robert's rules, table is different, yep.
I was looking at you while I was saying that, so I was hoping you were going to jump in there.
I was going to catch that, okay.
It's complicated, okay. All right. So we have a motion to second to postpone until April 15th. Any comments or thoughts on that from anybody else in the council?
One quick, like, procedural question. We just had a public hearing. There's a motion to postpone. When it's brought back up, will we have another public hearing, or has the public hearing happened?
Technically, you closed the public hearing. Councilman Dawson could amend it to say that he's happy to have another public hearing. You could decide at the time. It's at the pleasure of the council.
Okay. That's good, that's all.
I would prefer it's town and bring it up, because I'm in favor of having another public hearing, but-
So you want to go ahead and just amend, chief, what you're saying, to include a public hearing also on April 15th?
I definitely want a public hearing.
And Councilman Parsons still second to that?
Yes.
All right, anyone else? Kelly, you got-
Yes, I've got a number of textual changes to the body of the comp plan update. And if it's appropriate, I will wait until we reintroduce the item as requested by Councilman Dawson, and I'll present those textual changes as amendments at that time. Is that procedurally okay?
Procedurally, you're welcome to do that, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep, sure.
Oh, and also, not just textual changes, but the map changes to the optimal boundary, those two things. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we, so all in favor of postponing till April 15th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we'll take this back up on April 15th with a public hearing, okay? All right. And I know there's people in the audience that are really interested in what we've done here tonight. Sometimes this is real confusing, as you can tell. If you'd like to address any of this with us and clarify, please don't, we'll be around after the meeting, or you could send us emails tomorrow, okay? All right.
Well, we'll clarify, you've taken no action on this, other than making an amendment to remove growth changes five and six. It's postponed to April 15th with another public hearing. There you go.
There you go, thank you.
All right. Now, item 10B is a conditional use request for approval of a road service use automotive repair facility for property located at 2860 East University Drive in the Comprehensive Development District zoning district, with a planned development district overlay. The project is known as Christian Brothers Automotive. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its January 9th meeting. A public hearing is required. However, the applicant has requested this item be postponed to February 18th due to the fact that they would like to complete an administrative subdivision before moving forward with this item.
I move to postpone to a date certain of 218.
Second.
We have a motion to second to postpone to February 18th. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we'll take this up on February 18th.
The next item is not requested.
I have a question on that item. It's not part of our deliberation at this point, but is it appropriate to ask that now?
Yes, go ahead now that we've, yes.
The parcel in question is much larger than the actual development itself. The parcel goes all the way over and backs up to Bent Court and Bridgewater Boulevard. And we've made a point in the past of notifying adjacent property owners of various things. I was wondering, have the residents of Bent Court and Bridgewater Boulevard been notified individually about this potential change?
They have not been, due to the pending administrative subdivision. The 1.18 acre parcel in question does not directly abut that. This was vetted by, with both the city attorney and our city planner, Justice Whyhe Cotton, has the ability to interpret the ordinance, and it has been determined they did not need to be notified. Planning Commission was made aware that this is really only involving a 1.18 acre parcel. And what happened here is, the administrative subdivision did not get completed, and therefore, that's why they're asking for postponements. That's done. But we've fully vetted that the public notification has been correct at this point.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so it's not required. Is it something that we would desire? And if so, can we make that happen?
So this parcel is not going to be abutting them?
Well, according to the map, it is.
The bigger parcel, so it's going to take the 6.87 acre parcel, this is subdividing off 1.18 acres. So the interpretation was made that you're not contacting people who are not going to be adjoining property owners.
Okay, so this big parcel that's on the map will be subdivided, or?
Yes, in a 1.18 acre parcel adjacent to Troy Bank and Trust.
Okay.
And the stem that sticks down to East University Drive.
And that's why this is being postponed?
Yeah, the applicant, we talked a good bit about this today, and I'll have our planning director go over a little bit, was what was said at Planning Commission, and why the need for postponement today.
Yeah, so normally, when we have conditional use- Yeah, so normally when we have conditional uses come in, conditional uses are tied to the land. And so one of the, it's in the staff report that one of the comments were made that the admin plat needed to, needed to go through to only encumber the boundaries that they wanted to encumber with the conditional use. If they did not do that, the conditional use would actually then expand to the entirety of the 6.8 acres. And so that's why the admin plat is required. And normally, like I said, we, normally there's an admin plat tied to it, like they run concurrently, it might be happening behind the scenes, but normally this doesn't happen, it's kind of odd. So that's why we didn't make it a condition, it was just a comment, something that needed to happen and needed to be addressed.
When this comes, when this comes back to us on the map, we'll be able to see it subdivided?
Correct. And so, yeah, and so that, so the map isn't an error, the map just shows that currently the land itself has not been subdivided, and that 1.8 acres that they were shown in their site plan does not exist independently. It is a part of the 6.8. And so that admin plat needs to happen for that 1.8 to be its own individual piece of property.
Justice Scott, do you want to speak to the discussion today about whether or not, first of all, the conditional use advertising requirement is that of one of our zoning ordinance, not, not a state law related issue?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. So APOs are kind of, so adjoining property owners are named in our zoning ordinance, and they are, it is required in the zoning ordinance that they be contacted. And so when we had the pre-app about the admin plat tying the land and the conditional uses, discussed that the admin plat would be submitted with it. And then when they submitted the site plan, it was one of the things, oh, like, we're gonna get to that. And it was one of the things that just kind of lapsed. So, so the interpretation was that the intent was there, the property owners, the property owners that were, adjoining property owners of the site plan were contacted, just not of the larger parcel that is not intended to be a part of this development.
Okay. And one other, I have a request from the city manager, that the map that we see next time around shows the two PDDs that encompass these two, this property.
You're asking, you want the master plans, not the zoning map?
Well, I'm curious about where the PDD boundaries are, because it says the property is part of the Kerry Creek PDD and the Shops at Kerry Creek PDD. So I'm curious as to where the boundaries are. And, you know, if something was in a PDD, it implies planned. Why are we even looking at it again?
So it was planned to just be commercial in this area. It did not identify specific uses with the exact goal of coming back at the time the property was ready to develop to then vet conditional uses. So the shops at Kerry Creek themselves were defined in a shopping center type format, but some of those uses over time came back. The Wendy's came back, the Credit Union came back, the gas station came back, because those are things that happened later that were not identified. A lot of times when the council's dealing with road service uses in a planned development, sometimes the council's not comfortable with approving those upfront, or the applicant isn't saying, hey, we want to show you what exactly we're doing. So here, this area is labeled in the 2012 Kerry Creek PDD as commercial, and it's just a broad commercial.
All right. All right, thank you.
All right, item C.
All right, item 10C authorizes a tax abatement for Sohan Auto USA Corporation for the acquisition of new equipment for locations at both 2460 Court and 2590 Innovation Drive that will result in the creation of eight new jobs over the next three years and a capital investment of approximately $5 million.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
All right, you have anything else to say about that, Mayor?
Thank you for the great job on our industrial development team. Always working hard for Auburn.
You're saving us a lot of time, I think.
Make tomorrow better.
Item 10D authorizes a contract with Veet National Corporation for the Mall and Tacoma Basin Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $864,020.
May for approval?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay, this time we'll open Citizens' open forum. It's your opportunity to speak to the council about anything that might be on your mind. We ask that you address your comments to the council. You have three minutes. We would ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Steve Cosgrove, 1927 Watercrest Drive. And I haven't been here in a while, haven't seen you, and I just wanted to come and tell you, I really, really, really appreciate you individually. I appreciate your role, I appreciate your position, I appreciate everything you do for and with the city. And I mean that. Next month, it'll be, it'll be 50 years that I stepped in this fine village. And I felt that then, and I thought about it all this time, and I really, really believe that. And I just, I really wanted to tell you all that. I really mean that. I do have a little, something I want to share with you. Last March, when you and I, Honorable Mayor, were talking about my idea about Felton Little Park, and I know you've heard a lot about that and so forth, but you mentioned something that I took note of, and you said Facebook. You said, you know, Steve, you can reach a lot of people doing that. Well, I'd never opened Facebook even till three weeks ago, four weeks ago. So my bright, wonderful wife, Sherry, the school teacher, the person that she was, she helped me create that. And so I got a Facebook page, and by the way, you can access to everybody, it's open to the public. It's called The Story of Felton Little Park. And I welcome, I warmly welcome and encourage everyone that's ever had any experience with Felton Little Park, merry-go-round, the slides, the teeter-totters, whirligig, whatever you want to call it, ball, playing ball there, what have you, to give that some thought and jot down some of your experiences. You can send it to me, I'll make it real easy for you. Send it to me, and I'll put it on there. I got it on there. But I wanted to tell you that I thought about that, Ron. And it's been brought up by a couple of other folks that are in this, in this room right now. So that's what, that's going on, and getting a lot of interest in that. And I just encourage people to give some thought to how your engagement with Felton Little Park, your family, it could have been a picnic, a reunion, ballgame, what have you, how that's touched your lives and what that means to you. So I warmly encourage you to do that, and I'd like you to do that, if you would. And I want a special shout out to Chief Tommy Dawson, and you're a sweet mother. I hope she's doing well. All right, buddy. Take care. Thanks for letting me address you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cosgrove. Anyone else? Okay, is there a move to adjourn? Is there a move? All right, we adjourn.